... United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please, Ms. Garza.
Yes. Chairman Williams.
Here.
Vice Chairwoman Kiefer.
Here.
Mr. Albert.
Here.
Mr. Di Maria.
Here.
Mrs. Seberg.
Here.
Mrs. Williams.
Here.
Mrs. Stevens.
Here.
Ms. Putro.
Here.
Ms. Osorio Flores.
Here.
Thank you very much, Ms. Garza. Are there any additions or corrections to the agenda, Dr. Newman?
Yes, sir. On the consent agenda, please add personnel, ratification of personnel, and delete under closed session, closed session, as it was moved to the special meeting.
Thank you very much, sir. Good job.
Thank you. That's two things.
Superintendent's announcements and spotlights, Mrs. Al Ratford.
Good evening. Thank you, Chairman Williams. Good evening, Dr. Newman, other members of the board. Good evening to each of you and to everyone that has joined us for this evening. I do want to stand before you tonight to share one spotlight, and I would ask that you all would come and join us down front, if you don't mind. All right. So tonight, we would like to recognize one of our amazing student athletes on her most recent accomplishments. I'm going to call her forward, and then I will tell you a little bit about her. Ivy Lynn Powell is a senior at Osborne High School. So I'm going to ask her to come on up. All right. She has represented her school and her community in powerful ways, and I would like to share some of that with you. She's been a varsity field hockey starting player since her freshman year and has been the team's speaking captain for the past two seasons. She finished both her sophomore and junior seasons as the team's second highest leading scorer and as a leader in assists. At the end of her junior year, she submitted a time trial to be considered for the Futures Program through USA Field Hockey. She was accepted and participated in the program at the start of 2019. At the end of October, she completed her senior season, having achieved many remarkable accomplishments. She scored 14 goals and had 19 assists, contributing a total of 33 points for her team. She has been her team's MVP award recipient for the past two seasons and is a four-year varsity letter recipient. This season, she earned her third consecutive First Team All-District selection as a midfielder and was ranked as the second-best player in the Cedar Run District. Then, she became only the second player in program history to make First Team All-Region, also as a midfielder. And then on November 21st, Ivy Lynn became the very first player in Osborne's field hockey's 12-year history to make an All-State team. She was selected for Second Team in the Player-at-Large category. Ivy Lynn is a remarkable student athlete, having participated in five different varsity sports throughout her time at Osborne. However, the even more important part to stress about her is her dedication to her Osborne community. She has been involved in so many different clubs and activities, including Youth Salute, Yearbook, Key Club, FBLA, Interact Club, Community Action Athletes, SCA Student Council, and she has served as an Eagle Ambassador. How does she find time to do it all? She is also a member of the National Honor Society, having maintained a 4.0 GPA every year of her high school career. Congratulations to you. Don't leave, because while we celebrate her, she is a part of a team. Her coach, Amanda Coombs, is here tonight. I've asked her to come and introduce her other coaches that are with her, and she's going to talk a little bit about the overall accomplishments of the team this year.
So my name is Amanda Coombs. I've been the head coach of Osborne's field hockey program for three seasons now, and I would also like to introduce my two lovely assistant coaches. Deborah Clark has been with Osborne's program since its inaugural season 12 years ago. Thirteen, technically. And Rebecca Inamorado joined us this season. She's actually an Osborne field hockey alumni herself and came back to coach the program with us, as well as teach in the city. So I want to introduce them. I do want to thank the whole school board, as well as Dr. Newman, for having us here tonight. We feel that we're so proud of Ivy Lynn and everything that she's been able to accomplish, and she certainly played a pivotal role for our team this season. But I also want to share some of our overall team's success with you. We had one of our most successful seasons in our program's history this year. We had, between varsity and JV, we actually saw the revival of our JV program this season. We haven't had a JV team in about five years, and we saw the revival of that. And between the two teams, we had 34 female student athletes who were committed to our program this season and one excellent manager. We increased our number of goals from last season by 33. We were able to beat teams that we lost to on the mercy rule last year. We were able to prove to the teams in our district that we can compete on their level and make a name for ourself in the Cedar Run District. And this was most remarkably proven during a game in which we forced Battlefield to, in case you don't follow field hockey, went on to win the Cedar Run District title, as well as the regional title, and they went on to compete at states. And we forced them to overtime and a double overtime shootout at one point during our season. This season, our varsity team scored 42 goals, had five hat tricks, contributed 31 assists, had 17 defensive saves, three goalie shutouts, and over 100 goalie saves. Our goalie DJ Holzkla is going to follow in Ivy's footsteps and participate in the USA Field Hockey Futures Program this spring. We had six players earn all district honors. Ivy Lynn made First Team All-Region and then became the first player in our program's history to make an All-State team. All of these accomplishments are wonderful, but our team really wants to take this opportunity to thank the supportive people that we've had this season. We had so many people come out to support us: school board members, Dr. Newman, Principal Flugrath, different community members, our parents this year on our team were phenomenal. And we just feel overall that our program was very supportive this year, so we wanted to thank all of you for that. Our team motto is "One Team, One Family." And I just really want to take the opportunity to say that the girls on our team, I'm sorry, I like get emotional. The girls on our team are wonderful, and there are 34 girls that really are their family. They're great, and they're like the best kids that I could ever work with, so, thank you.
Wipe your tears away. The waves, girl.
Congratulations to you. This concludes our spotlights for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. And before you guys leave, when was she at the baseball fields? Her whole life, she's been at Osborne, and she was on them stupid shoes with the rollers on the bottom, back and forth, back and forth, every game. So it's wonderful to see what a lovely young lady you've become. Yeah. She might be at the softball field, but not at the baseball field.
Tim, I've known her since she was an eight-and-under swimmer.
All right, well, she was less than eight when she was at the baseball fields. Don't play with me.
On that note, thank you all. Next on the agenda, board committee reports. Are there any board committee reports?
No.
Great, thank you. Next, board member comments. We will start with our student representatives and Ms. Putro.
Good evening, students, parents, and community members of Manassas City. Holiday cheer is in the air, and our students and staff are shining brighter than ever. This past Saturday, our city held its 74th Annual Greater Manassas Christmas Parade. Manassas City Public Schools are represented by shimmering colors all across the magical event. Osborne's Screaming Eagle Marching Band and Color Guard performed flawlessly, spreading music and cheer. Manassas City Public School superintendent, school board, and students marched and spread smiles to all the surrounding spectators. Osborne's Interact Club marched with their fireside-themed float, and Osborne Skills USA won first prize with their creative train-themed float. Round Elementary recently attended a Lego League competition at Osborne Park High School. The bright students competed in robot design, mission of the robot table, core value challenge, and research project and presentation. The theme this year was "City Shapers," and the students focused on ways to keep their creeks and streams clean. Thirty-four different teams competed, and Round Elementary was awarded second place for the research and presentation. Congratulations to all the members for their hard work and resilience. A few weeks ago, Manassas City Public Schools gave me the opportunity to attend the Virginia School Board Conference in Williamsburg. Other school board representatives of all backgrounds taught one another about the ethnic, religious, and social factors that drive their school policies. I was also able to learn from numerous speakers, such as Lou Val Brown, about building a culture of love, power, and equity in our schools. I'm looking forward to applying this new knowledge to improve Manassas City Public Schools' learning environment. Thank you, Manassas City, for this opportunity. Whether it's marching in the cold to spread Christmas music and cheer, to parading on the float to represent the club, to winning a Lego tournament, our students always shine bright representing our school system. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Ms. Osorio Flores.
Good evening. My name is Tanya Osorio Flores. I'm a junior at Osborne High School, and I'd like to thank the school board for this opportunity, and I look forward to be representing the students of Manassas Public Schools. And I wanted to say that I want to give a shout-out to those clubs like Fosse Latina, Scallas, and FBLA that are starting winter drives for clothes and food and more personal items to give to shelters and to send to Guatemala and other countries.
Thank you very much, and welcome. Ms. Stevens.
First, I'd like to say, welcome, Tanya, as our new school board representative from Osborne High School. We look forward to working with you. I had the opportunity last week to go to Holiday Fest at Osborne High School. It was a wonderful quick kickoff to the holiday season. I was so impressed, and I cannot wait to go again next year. The kids did a great job. It got us all in the holiday spirit, and then we followed that with the Christmas parade. And I'd like to say congratulations to Skills USA on their float win. It was a great float. It was wonderful seeing everyone from the school, whether it was school board, city council members, our students, and everyone from the school. It was a wonderful day, and although it was cold, it was nice and sunny, and the wind was not blowing. It was a great weekend, and welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Williams.
Okay. First, I would like to welcome Ms. Flores to the board. I am very thankful that the city of Manassas has so many talented students. We had so many applications, and I'm very thankful that we had the opportunity to ask you to be on the board. I'm excited to work with you. I'd also like to congratulate Ivy. What an amazing, amazing, that is a true student athlete. I'm so excited for her. The first time I met her was on the softball fields, but I just, wow. It really shows what our cities can do when we work together and with each other and make all of our students thrive. I'd also like to continue everybody's comments about our season of giving this time of year. The Manassas City Public Schools Education Foundation, it is shopping season, so if you are going to be shopping online and using Amazon, please consider Amazon Smile. And if you click, you will find the Manassas City Public School Education Foundation, and they will get a, yes, very, very small portion, but they'll get a portion of those proceeds. So if you're doing that, please consider that. Also, the scholarship applications for these education foundations are now available online at MSP, I'm sorry, MCPSEDfoundation.org and on their Facebook page. Now to continue on to the sports theme, Osborne High School is hosting the Dools at the Depot, which is a huge wrestling tournament. Twelve schools come, it's a big deal. We are known throughout the entire Northern Virginia area to have the best hospitality room, so I want to thank all of the businesses. There are so many businesses, Subway, I can't remember them all, Subway, Velocity Wing, so many businesses who are going to donate food, and then all of the community members who also participate and donate food. But I'd love to hear the coaches from Clayne or Madison say, "You guys have got the best hospitality room." So if anybody wants to do something simple, feel free to give then. We also have a Saturday learning seminar Saturday morning, which they're always, always welcoming a breakfast item, whether it's just fruit, water, make a casserole, or they'll take cash as well. So that's this Saturday morning from 9 until noon. Bring the books. We'll feed you, feed your brains, to help you with any last-minute items, homework, projects that need to be done, because the end of the school, the end of the grading period is next Friday. I know some teachers are requiring everything to be done prior to that, so use that opportunity. And I just want to mention as well, we all were in participation at the, down in Williamsburg at the Virginia Association, Virginia School Board Association convention, and I, just what we get, go out and do break sessions, breakout sessions, and the things we learn and we realize nationwide, the challenges we face in the city are no different than any other schools, truly. And it's just really a great opportunity to really realize how well we are doing. And all that said, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. And before I move on to Ms. Seberg, we have two council people here tonight. This is Dave Junger and Mr. Smiths. Thank you for being here. We really appreciate your time and your energy and your support. Ms. Seberg.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to welcome Tanya. Thank you so much. It was a pleasure to interview you in the spring and to re-interview you this fall. You're a standout among your peers, and we welcome you, and we're looking forward to good things with you. December is a great month to be a school board member because of the Santa lights, the Christmas parade, and all the fun things going on. Holiday Fest was fabulous. This Thursday night at 7:00 PM, there's a chorus concert at Osborne High School. 7:00 PM, all are welcome. Next week, there's an orchestra concert. And lastly, I wanted to congratulate the newest members of the Pauline Smith National Honor Society at Osborne High School. It's a Pauline Smith chapter. So tonight, 23 members were inducted in. Those are 23 juniors, and they join 24 seniors that are already members of the National Honor Society. And the National Honor Society, you know, you have to keep high ratings, but you also have to pledge to uphold the high purposes and be true to the principles of scholarship, leadership, service, and character. So congratulations to those students. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Seberg. Mr. Di Maria.
Thank you, sir. Everybody said most everything I want to say. You mentioned the holiday concert. These kids are so good. I mean, I just sat there, it was incredible. Wasn't it, Michelle? It was incredible. And each group, you think, oh, they can't do better than that, and then they do better than that. It's, if you've got time, go see these things that Suzanne mentioned, because it's better than watching TV. The wrestling thing is on Saturday, as Ms. Williams said. Basketball, boys and girls, girls are playing as we speak, right? So hopefully, they will win again. I don't remember the last time, they were 2-0, but they're 2-0, and they are, they were devastating wins. I mean, they've done very, very well. I'm very impressed with our girls. Boys play tomorrow night at home, right? No?
Friday.
No, the girls are tomorrow night at home again. Girls are tomorrow night at home. The boys are just, they're, I don't know, they're so exciting to watch, even when they don't win. They're so exciting to watch. They work so hard. And then, I mentioned this to the mayor and some city council members, I don't think I mentioned it to either one of you guys, so I'll mention it to you now. Between the tree lighting on Friday night and the parade on Saturday, count your blessings, people. We live in the greatest city in the world. The way everything comes together, everybody forgets all of your differences, and we're here for the city, and it's just so wonderful. So much fun, so much camaraderie, and you just don't get that anywhere else than here in Manassas. I'm so lucky that I've been here the vast majority of my life, and if Sue will let me, I'll finish my life here, but count your blessings for living in this city. We are very, very lucky, and I'd like to thank you guys for supporting all of that as well. Thanks, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Albert.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First, a warm welcome to our newest student representative. Look forward to hearing your comments as we continue through the year. Actually, what a few people said, I've often talked about, good schools, engaged schools, give us great communities. And that was evident this weekend, whether it was at the tree lighting, where many of our fine arts, two of our fine arts groups performed, the Weems Trees at the museum, the parade Saturday, where you couldn't, half the parade, I think, was full of Osborne and many of our schools and various events. It was fantastic. And to Mr. Di Maria's point, it really shows what a great community is. A couple of things of note, last Monday, we met with our local delegates, with city council. We all talked about our legislative priorities. I guess because I'm me, I had to ask a question and point out, not my opinion, but fact, that state funding for education has never recovered from the Great Recession. And that is placing a huge burden on casualties across the Commonwealth, and it really matters to those of us here locally, because we are feeling the crunch. So we did talk about that, but it is something that we, I think, all need to continue to have the dialogue with, because the city council grapples with what they have to do for taxes. One of the biggest issues out there is the state continues to have high requirements that aren't funded. Finally, it's, we haven't had a board meeting since then. I just want to thank all of our current and our former board members. I completed my tenure on the VSBA Board of Directors as past president in November, of course, we were all at the program, but I could not have done it without the encouragement, the support, and the friendship of the people on this diocese, both now and in the past. To those of you up here tonight, thank you.
Ms. Kiefer.
Thank you, and I'll be brief, because everyone already said such great comments. First, welcome, Tanya. I will say it again, because I say it every time a new face comes up here. We learn our best from you all, so look forward to your leadership. We'll continue to partner with you in any way that you need, so lean on us. I also want to just thank Mrs. Seberg and Mrs. Williams for really kind of leading the charge. They've been doing this for a long time, in addition with other school board members here, and just know that that's very much appreciated, to add this asset to our board up here. I also just wanted to extend happy holidays to everybody as we go into this season of giving and thinking about what we're really grateful for. I was struck by the field hockey coaches saying the slogan was "One Team, One Family." And I think here in Manassas, not just the schools, but the community at large, we have to continue to be one team and one family, whether it's around funding for the schools or other city initiatives, advocating for the right things at the right time for the right reason, working with our parents, our kids, our staff, our administrators, just continuing to be that one team and that one family that we call Manassas. So I just want to say I'm grateful for everyone up here. Scott, thank you for your continued service and mentorship to each of us up here. Thank you to the staff, to everyone who's not here tonight, for everything you've done to kick off a very successful school year, and I look forward to the rest of it. So thank you all, and happy holidays.
Thank you. And I'll just conclude by welcoming Ms. Osorio Flores. It's good to see you up here. I can't wait to see what you contribute, and you both made great comments tonight, so thank you very much. And for Ivy Lynn Powell, we've gotten to know her, especially the last four years. She's incredible, the personification of a student athlete, and also just a great student. And we have tons of great students like that in Manassas, and hopefully, folks who don't know that will get to know that as the school year goes on. So thank you all for being here. Next on the agenda, citizens' comments. Are there any citizens' comments? I don't see any citizens rising to speak, so I will move on to the next item, the consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, with the consent agenda to be approved as adopted, pardon me, as modified.
Motion by Mr. Albert, second by Ms. Kiefer, that the school board of students in Manassas approve the consent agenda as modified. All in favor?
Aye.
All oppose? Eyes have it 7-0. The consent agenda is approved, is modified. Next up, discussion agenda. The first item is Finance and Operation Independent Auditor's Report. Mr. Andy Hawkins.
Good evening, Chairman Williams, Dr. Newman, school board members. One of the primary responsibilities we have to our community is the proper accounting, reporting, and safeguarding of all taxpayer funds entrusted to the school board. Annually, all government entities are required to engage in an independent audit. The city of Manassas and the school board have hired Brown Edwards &amp; Company, certified public accountants, to conduct a fiscal year FY 2019 audit. A copy of the report is on the screen and is attached for your review. The audit encompassed all funds received and all expenditures in the operating fund, the food service fund, federal fund, debt service, and capital improvement funds. I'm pleased to report to you that Manassas City School Board has received an unqualified opinion. An unqualified opinion reflects the judgment of the independent auditor that the financial statements are fairly and appropriately presented, without any identified exception, and in compliance with generally accepted accounting principles. In addition to not having any findings, the auditors did not have any comments, questions, or suggestions for improvement. It is our professional responsibility, and we take great pride in our efforts to achieve these results. Tonight, I'd like to thank Ms. Jan Schonenberger and Mrs. Lee Miller, who both head up the finance and budget teams. In addition, I'd like to thank our school department bookkeepers, school and department bookkeepers, and all of their hard work in processing and properly accounting for the thousands, literally thousands, of transactions that are completed annually by the school So with that, if there is any questions, concerns, comments?
Thank you, Mr. Hawkins. Any comments? Mr. Di Maria.
You proud of that?
We're very proud of that.
Yeah, so are we.
Extremely proud of it.
So are we. We appreciate not having any problems that we have to deal with, because you guys do such a good job. Thank you all very much.
We strive to be accurate and to be transparent, so that we want to enable the trust of our community, and we want it to be well-deserved.
I can't think of how many years we've been completely clean, but it's habitual, and we appreciate it very much.
Thank you. Any comments down to my left? Thank you. It's a great accomplishment. We appreciate the hard work and the diligence of you, Ms. Miller, and your team. It's, sometimes, people take it right, and we take it right sometimes, but I want to let you know, we do appreciate it, so thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Next on the agenda, policies. Ms. Kristen Kiefer will present the policies that will be reviewed or revised.
Yes, thank you. So the policy committee has met on just three policies this time. Thank you to Ms. Garza for keeping us on track with these. And basically, what we try to do is look at the Virginia School Board Association's policies and decide if they suit our needs. So just for the public to know, we review these regularly. The three that we reviewed this time related to the student representative policy, staff salary schedules, and an issue about non-residents. They can be viewed online. The only changes and revisions that we made at this time were just some simple language around our student representative policy and how we engage school board members in the process, et cetera. So with that, I don't know if there was any other things that any of the other policy members wanted to add to this, but there were no major revisions at this time, other than the minor recommendations to the student representative policy.
Thank you very much, Ms. Kiefer. I know that's Mr. Di Maria's favorite thing to do, review policies, and I'm sure he's gonna...
I'm not on fault. I was there, though.
That was the point.
Yeah.
I know you missed it.
And I will owe you forever. Thank you, sir.
Next item, action agenda. Old business, superintendent's evaluation goes 2019-2020.
School board members, the only change that you'll see on the document was I added in the part where...
in the part where we will submit the reports of the discipline items. Everything else stayed the same.
Okay.
Thank you.
Follow the rules.
May I have a motion, please?
Mr. Chair, I move that the School Board of the City of Manassas approve the superintendent's 2019, 2020 evaluation goals as presented.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Kiefer, second by Mr. Albert, that the School Board of the City of Manassas approve the superintendent's 2019, 2020 evaluation goals as presented. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Eyes have it seven zero. They are approved. Thank you. Next on the agenda, school board legislative priorities. Mrs. Kristen Kiefer.
Okay. Just really quickly, I know Mr. Albert has addressed this in his opening comments. There was a breakfast December 2nd with the city council, school board, Senator McPike, and Delegate Carter to discuss what we presented as legislative priorities from the school's standpoint. These are available for public consumption. They've been out there, there was a good conversation related to these. We will continue to talk to the state about the need for some school funding in particular, but there are other things around discipline, around leaving local control where it belongs, and so on and so forth, so I encourage the public to become acquainted with these and help us start advocating for many of these issues. And so, we're looking for approval of these this evening.
Thank you very much, Ms. Kiefer. May I have a motion, please?
I move that the School Board of the City of Manassas approve the legislative priorities as presented.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Demaria, second by Ms. Seberg, that the School Board of the City of Manassas approve the legislative priorities as presented. Is there any discussion?
I have an observation.
Observations?
There is a hot trending potential item in Richmond that we're silent to, and most people are, and that is collective bargaining. I don't know where it's going to go. I personally believe we're a right-to-work state, and we should honor that. If we start to go down that slope, let's not talk about what it does to schools, and I do know the SBA is opposed to it, but as an employer, as an entrepreneur, I worry about what that could do to the economy.
Thank you. That's something we took under advisement and keep an eye on. Thanks for pointing it out, it's a very good point, because it could have serious ramifications for our teachers in the state. So, I have a motion by Mr. Demaria, second by Ms. Seberg, that the School Board of the City of Manassas approve the legislative priorities as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Eyes have it seven zero. Our priorities are approved. The next item on the agenda, Finance and Operations, the 2019 year in finance report and carryover. Mr. Andy Hawkins.
Albert, can you pull up the PowerPoint, please? So, as first reported at the November 12th school board meeting, we ended the fiscal year, I'll try to make this bigger so people can see it. We ended the fiscal year in the operating fund with approximately $3.8 million in remaining funds, in the operating fund, and approximately $190,000 in the food service fund, for a total, total change in the fund balance of approximately $4 million. Of that amount, so that amount equates to us expending 96% of our budgeted amounts, and it resulted in us spending 96.2% of our actual revenue received. So, can you go to the next slide, Albert, please? So, our beginning fund balance in the operating fund was $4.572,000. Our FY 19 excess actual revenue over expenditure, approximately $3.8 million. On June 30th, we had outstanding encumbrances of $133,000. So, our FY 19 ending fund balance is approximately $8.3 million. There was a presentation given at the last school board meeting on the benefits and the needs of the Virginia preschool initiative for the V P I program. The V P I program in Manassas has shown great success, and it has the potential to continue forward. The reason this money was being asked for, this $546,000, is that last May, late after the budget had been adopted and contracts had been issued out to the teachers, we received word from the state that they were cutting our funding for the V P I program, something that they recognize as much as we do, what a great program it has been, and how much, how successful it has been here. But nevertheless, even though there were sufficient funds at the state to pay it, to continue funding the program, they declined to do that. We had, like I said before, we'd already issued the contracts, we already had a, knew we had a successful program, so we decided at that time to continue going forward for this year, even though we knew that we would be going in a deficit for this particular part. So, we're asking that the school board bring forward $546,163 from FY 19 to FY 20 to make up this projected shortfall in the V P I funding, due to the state cutting our funding at the last minute. We will be looking forward to the governor's budget, which will be released on December 17th. I've received word, actually, tonight, that the governor has included in his budget additional funding for the preschool program. Now, all of that still has to be reviewed and approved by the General Assembly, but if additional funding is not received for this program, there will be choices that the school board will need to make during the next budget cycle. We can either reduce the program, we can cut other programs within our current budget to provide these funding for our students and to continue the success of this program. Or maybe now we have a third option, where maybe the state will, in Governor Northam's budget, will be doing that. We have not received anything but a press release, so I don't have any details about whether or not it is, this funding will be sufficient going forward. But that's something that we'll be looking forward to when we review the governor's budget on 17th, and we will bring that data back to the school board when we meet, when we start having our budget work sessions next year. So, our remaining fund balance, at the end of all of that, is 7,759,363, and so that's our request for tonight, as far as the carryover, primarily for our V P I program, and to pay our obligations that were outstanding from FY 19 on June 30th. Are there any questions, concerns?
Thank you, sir. Well, first, may I have a motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, with the School Board of the City of Manassas approve the carried request of $133,144 for outstanding encumbrances and $546,163 for the V P I funding. Second.
Motion by Mr. Albert, second by Mr. Demaria, that the School Board of the City of Manassas approve the operating carried request for outstanding encumbrances in the amount of $133,144, and V P I program expenditures in the amount of $546,163. Is there any discussion? I'm sure there is, Mr. Albert.
We've had the discussion, but I want to personally iterate, more than a half a million dollars we are taking out of our local funding to do the right thing for programs in place, because the state, as I started with, hasn't made up for the Great Recession yet. And here's another example where it's even less. We cannot continue like this. I've spoken to city council specifically and said, "We have difficult decisions and difficult roads ahead," and this is one I do not see, I'm not as optimistic as Andy is. I don't think the funding is going to be there. We continue to have a bunch of bureaucrats at every level of government who support education and don't want to pay for it.
Thank you, sir.
I guess I was a little too political, I apologize.
Quite all right.
Yes, I should let it go, but I didn't last time, and he didn't, so. We had a close session at our last meeting, and the discussion came around to what's right for kids, and I think we made the decision that was right for kids. And I don't know why the state, why I got back $220 this year, but they can't pay what they obligated themselves to pay. It just drives me nuts that people don't live up to their word, and this is our state officials, and you say one thing and then do another, and you do another late in the game. If we didn't have these people so prudent with our funds, to where we spent 96.2%, as opposed to 106.2%, we wouldn't have the funds to do this. And it, somebody somehow needs to be held accountable for this, and I'm with Mr. Albert. When it comes to budgeting for this year, I will be voting to somehow, some way, completely fund this, if necessary. Hopefully, we're wrong, and the state will put in what they have promised and what is necessary for the development of our children. And I wish people would look at it that way, rather than any other way, and I'm proud of this board for doing that. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Did you clarify, Mr. Demaria?
Sir?
I didn't say I supported it in the current, in the to-be-announced superintendent's budget. I said, "We've got a half million-plus dollars to cut, if the state doesn't give us money", which is a program.
Yeah, okay.
And before we vote on this, I'll just add that, I'm talking off the top of my head, this may not be good. I think societies are often judged by how they treat those who are the least able to help themselves, and the fact that the state would look at some of our least advantaged citizens, and not only not fund it, but cut a promise to fund it, is appalling. When we look at America and the American dream, we encourage people to go to school, to do the best that they can. We see achievement gaps constantly, based on socioeconomic and ethnicity. We know for a fact that these achievement gaps can be altered, maybe even obliterated, by having children be exposed to education at a young age. V P I does this, it'd be great if we do it for all of our citizens and all of our children, but it definitely does this for our kids. And again, to me, it's appalling that we would not do whatever we could to help our children be the best they can be. We really are trying to raise kids to be great, and raise them to, you know, reach their potential, and raise them to compete. We need to help them compete from go, from the time they are able to be communicated with. And V P I does this, and I hope that the state gives us the funding to do this, or we find a way to do this, because it's something very, very important, and we really are about helping the kids and the students and educating kids, so to speak. This is essential and very important, so, that's my two cents.
Can I add two cents?
Yes.
So, the governor has proposed adding $94.8 million to the V P I. It's going to be broken, according to the press release, it's to be broken down in different components for different parts of the program. But what we can do as you're elected and as constituents who are watching, is reach out to our legislators and tell them how important this is, that as the adults, the people who care about those who are most vulnerable among us, it's our responsibility as constituents, as voters, and as elected, to reach out to those legislators and tell them how important this is, because they won't act on it if we don't tell them. So, that's my encouragement for everyone to do.
All right, thank you very much.
One more thing, sir?
Yes, sir.
Can I add on?
Sure.
Can I pile on?
Go for it.
Ms. Stevens reminded me of something else that needed to be said, that our senator, we have reached out to Mr. McPike, and he is fighting diligently for us. So, Ms. Stevens is 100% right, and we should flood them with our opinions of how important it is to fund our earliest learners, but a shout-out to Senator McPike for doing that already.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Stevens.
Okay, on the floor, we have a motion from Mr. Albert, second from Mr. Demaria, that the School Board of the City of Manassas approve the operating carried request for outstanding encumbrances in the amount of $133,144, and the V P I program expenditures in the amount of $546,163. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Eyes have it seven zero. Motion is approved. The next and last item on our agenda is the draft C I P, Capital Improvement Plan. Mr. Hawkins.
Good evening, Andy. We're here tonight to hopefully adopt the FY 21 Capital Improvement Plan. The FY 20 plan is on there just for reference only. We do commit, show a five-year plan to show where we're headed, where we want our school division to be in the next five years. Certain, the $3 million that we have associated in city transfer or pay-as-you-go money across the top was developed based on industry standards, and what was recommended as being prudent as far as keeping up with our facilities and our infrastructure. We have money that was left unspent from FY 2019 that we had planned to spend in FY 21 to offset the cost that we have this year for significant cost. If you go down and you'll see, we have major, I wish that would go off, we would, we have a major project as far as the Mayfield roof replacement. Also, we have not completed the round H V A C project for FY 2019 of $2.2 million. Since we changed our calendar last school year, we just didn't have enough summer, enough days in the summer to be able to do it last school year. So, this summer, starting on June 1st, we will begin the round H V A C replacement in the Mayfield roof replacement. Other components of the FY 20 C I P are for division-wide technology upgrades. This $250,000 is entirely for infrastructure upgrades. These are not buying computers or laptops or anything like that for our students, but they are infrastructure upgrades to make sure that our systems work appropriately. Division-wide bus replacements of $486,000, that keeps our school division in compliance, and our buses within the recommended 16-year replacement cycle. School bus additions, with our continued enrollment increases, our enrollment has increased this year from prior years, and we anticipate it to continue to grow, something that, I'm not sure all of us realize, but Manassas City Public Schools has never had as many students as we have right now, and they are continuing to grow. And we may need additional buses to be able to transport students, so we've allocated some funding to buy additional buses to help us in that effort. The next line down is division-wide classroom trailers, with continued increase in enrollment, and with the delay or postponement of the Dean School project to 2026, we may need some more capacity to be able to house students or have classrooms. We've put additional funding in each of the next three years for additional classroom trailers that may need to be purchased and placed at our schools, and until such time as the city council and the school board can agree on funding options to be able to either replace the Dean School or have additions to our current elementary schools, and, or all of our schools, not just elementary schools. Also upcoming in the next year, we will start our planning process for architectural and engineering services for the transfer, or the planned move of the central office over to the current police station, and we will begin the following year doing renovations to those buildings for the next, probably the next 12 to 18 months, to doing renovations to those buildings, that building, and hopefully, we will transition over the central office to be in the old police station as soon as the new police station is built on Grand We anticipate that action, once completed, will save the school division approximately $175,000 annually, an amount of, a difference between the rent that we are paying now at the Apple Credit Union building, and the amount of money that it will cost us for debt service to... to pay for these renovations. So going forward, you can see that in future years, we have a lot of different projects from hallway floor replacement, restroom refurbishment, you know, to other infrastructure needs, cooling tower and chiller replacements over at Osborne. We have a lot of our projects out there. Those projects will probably change by the time we get closer to that time period. Things change over that period of time. It's hard for us right now to foresee where we will be at three years from now. But for FY, so tonight, we are asking for approval of the FY 21 CIP, and recognizing the plans that we have going forward for the other years is just to give you a heads up of where we think we're headed in those out years. Are there any questions, concerns, or comments about the FY 21 proposed CIP?
Thank you, Ms. Hawkins. May I have a motion, please?
Mr. Chair, I move the School Board of the City of Manassas approve the draft FY 2021 CIP as presented.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Albrecht, Mr. Demaria, that the School Board of the City of Manassas approve the draft FY 2021 Capital Improvement Plan as presented. Is there any discussion? Mr. Albrecht.
Of course, I think. So, reflecting back and looking at this CIP, I really have to give a lot of credit to Mr. Hawkins and his predecessors and the discipline this board puts into our financial planning. When I started on this board 19 years ago, a fleet replacement schedule and a building maintenance plan were things that Martians talked about and not something that our schools did. We have a lot of discipline and rigor, and we know what it takes, and we are really at a crossroads when we look at this CIP. We're gonna spend a million dollars in the next five years on trailers for capacity because of continued enrollment growth, and it's capacity we need now. We potentially could have now, but we have made the decision to delay new dean until 2026 in a bonding cycle. And that's as long as that can can be kicked. If we try to kick that can again, I can tell you, it's an IED waiting to blow up whoever tries to kick it. It's gotta be done. The need for a new central facility. Mr. Hawkins said, "The mutual path we are on with the city is ultimately gonna save the taxpayers' money when the existing police station is deeded over to us, and we can fix it, convert it, and make it a new central office." That's good for the citizens of Manassas, and it lets the property that we have taken off of the tax rolls, if you will, go back and be used as economic development in the community. I think that's real positive. That is a great path we mutually are on, and I'm hoping that the new public safety facility is well on its path and ahead of schedule. But this CIP has a lot of those things in it, the buses, the trailers, and then everything it takes to keep a, a business, and that is what education is, that is incredibly labor-intensive and bricks-and-mortar-intensive. This is the bricks-and-mortar piece that keeps us going. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
Mr. Demaria.
I agree with everything that Mr. Albrecht said, and again, appreciate all the work that's done at Central Office for this. And speaking of Central Office, we've got $6.3 million on here for a new, to redo Central Office. We haven't reached a formal agreement with the city yet, have we, as far as that building goes?
No, sir.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that was clear. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Any other comments to the right? If not, motion on the table, motion by Mr. Albrecht, second by Ms. Demaria, that the School Board of the City of Manassas approve the draft FY 2021 Capital Improvement Plan as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Eyes have it seven zero. And before we move to adjournment, I know that there is possibly a little bit of some snow, so get some sleep. Good luck.
You can call it now if you want. Move to adjourn, sir.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Demaria, second by Ms. Kiefer to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Eyes have it seven zero. We are adjourned.